Item B, the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with this to be a low light power plant. We discussed that in our site plan. Do you have any comments? We feel that generally that is the case. Item C, the proposed special land use shall be served adequately by central public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, fire, drainage structures, refuse to disposal, et cetera, et cetera. Again, this is an existing building, so most essential public facilities and services, like utilities and so forth, have been established. Site access appears to be adequate. Emergency vehicles would have access around the entire building. Remember, there's the knock box there for the fire department to get around the back portion. Item D, this curb cut meets requirements of the zoning ordinance. Circulation on adjacent streets appears to be acceptable. It's been approved now without the curb cut on Main Street. The proposed measures for security that were submitted, we think adequately mitigate any potential impacts on the police department, although I would certainly defer to their judgment on what is adequate as far as that's concerned. And obviously, all of these facilities are subject to the fee that's charged by the city that is intended to defreeze some, any of the potential increased enforcement or costs that the city inherits as a result of these types of things. As far as stormwater is concerned, they've submitted stormwater management calculations into information. They've proposed a 9,200 square foot, square feet of additional pavement, and they've shown a retention base in there, propose to capture the runoff, and we will have our staff with that to make sure that the calculations and structure there is adequate, although we expect it to be.
Andy, does that include the deferred parking area?
I don't think so, although that's a fairly small area in relation to the whole site, and I don't know that it would bring into that structure, but we can certainly factor that into our calculations. Item D, the proposed special land use shall not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. So with this being a micro business that has a growing component to it, so power and water consumption could be greater than what you would have in a typical retail operation. The applicant states that the proposed operation would not create an additional burden. They've submitted some electrical calculations that show what the maximum effort would be for each building. The applicant also indicated that a little study has been initiated with low light power, to which the applicant would make any engineering upgrades if necessary from an electrical perspective. So certainly, approval for low light power would be something that's required as a condition of approval here, and we would fully expect that the applicant will work with them to address whatever requirements come up to make sure that we're not causing issues with that.
And we already have it in the requirements?
Yes, of course.
And conditions?
Yep. Item E, the proposed special land use shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions or operations that will be detrimental to persons, property, or the general welfare by reasons of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, odor, or odors. So with these kinds of businesses, obviously, odors is the significant concern here. The applicant writes that all operations that may produce noise or odors will be contained to the facility by state-of-the-art ventilation systems and upgraded internal building layout. Odor control would include multiple carbon air scrubbers in each grow room and negative air pressure in the facility within eight fans. Common areas are proposed to have industrial, industrial air cleaner filtration, which satisfies the requirements of the zoning ordinance, which are primarily the carbon air filtration and negative air pressure in the building. The applicant has not indicated whether there will be any consumption of marijuana permitted on the property. If so, that would require an additional lessons from the state. The applicant has changed vigorously, saying no, that is not the case. Again, hours of operation were not shown on the submittal, so that's something that I think is governed, is that governed by the city's operating?
Governed by the regulatory organs.
So that's something that's governed by the city's regulatory organs there.
Isn't that what, where we thought, don't we have normal operating hours?
Yeah, it's nine AM to nine PM, Monday through Saturday, and I believe eleven to nine on Sunday.
That's on race? Whatever hours we've used.
And then we just brought that up, then I'm going back to, I think it is, nine to nine or?
Yeah, because there was a demand to go to ten or something.
Yeah, there was a request that we said we didn't move forward, but it's nine to nine, Monday through Saturday, and then it's almost positive, it's eleven to nine on Sunday.
He didn't make any specific decision on that because it's governed by the city's operating?
By the city's operating.
Yep. And the last one is that the proposed special land use shall comply with applicable federal, state, and local requirements, and capital of local permit shall be submitted to the city, so far as they've done that. And that would be an ongoing issue, obviously.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioner, special land use review standards A through L, I would propose that we accept them, as written. Do I have a second? And discussion? Amy, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Sheriff Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ghadula?
Yes.
Andy, adult use marijuana establishment special land use standards?
So in addition to the general standards for both site plans and special land uses that we just went through, adult use marijuana establishments obviously have their own specific set of special land use standards that you've seen before. So I'm going to walk through the standards that apply here to your review. First one is separation distances, so this is the isolation radius we've talked about, where these facilities cannot be within a tolerance period of a preschool or childcare center, whether it's public or private, not within 500 feet of your key to downtown district. The applicant has submitted a map that does meet that standard. Odors, we have, we just discussed. So they've proposed a ventilation system with carbon air filtration and negative air pressure to four to one ratio within the entire facility. Item D, states that the establishments shall be operated and maintained so that any byproducts or waste shall be properly and lawfully kept and disposed of so as to preclude any risk of carbon delivery for the state or welfare. Site plan shows a new dumpster behind the building, which would be totally tall and include a gate. Waste disposal is, is, would be processed as required by the state. The dumpster would be secured at all times and products would be rendered unusable prior to disposal. Locations for, so we do say out here that locations for disposal within the building should be something that needs to be shown on the floor plan, so usually when you get the floor plan, it shows all of the rooms in the buildings, then also how to dispose them within the building is shown on there. Do you want to back up, that's a typo on the dumpster there, again, check the plan.
You mean the tall, tall fence?
Yeah.
Supposed to be twenty-one foot tall, wasn't it?
Okay, so now the gate is about seventy feet tall, so that is a typo. The pad is twelve feet, I guess twelve foot square. The gate itself is, oh, six and a half is seven feet tall. Okay.
Also, the planning commission would include, this is a condition of approval, is that on our conditions?
Item E, precludes any establishment from the operator out of a residence or building used for residential purposes. They need vast standard. Item F, any portion of the structure where energy usage and heat exceed typical residential use, such as the grow room, shall be subject to inspection and approval by the fire department. Fuel, fertilizer, pesticide, et cetera, shall be stored and may secure them in a locker area and be compliant with the state pesticide laws. So this does obviously involve doing processing of marijuana, which may increase energy usage and heat beyond what you would have for residential use. They are proposing to use water and carbon dioxide for extraction, not propose to use toxic or harmful materials, and also proposing organic soils. There's only one type of insecticide proposed, which is also approved for organic use, and the applicant could probably explain in greater detail some of the details behind the organic compounds and materials that are being used for the cultivation of marijuana. So certainly, the planning commission may include, as a condition of approval, the inspection of any of these approved facilities by the city, and as well as secure storage of the proposed insecticide that will be used for the use. I think that is also, I'm sure it's already on our list of conditions. Item G prohibits an establishment from also selling alcohol or tobacco, which they are not proposing to do. They prohibit drive-throughs, which are not permitted, and they're not proposing those either. I require ongoing compliance with the marijuana regulation, the Michigan Regulation Taxation of Marijuana Act, so the state law. Planning commission may require additional landscape observation screening beyond what is required in Section 4.26. I think we've talked about that sufficiently at this point. Record keeping here, they've proposed to maintain records of production, sale, waste, et cetera, as required by the state. All builders, electrical plumbing, we can't hold permits and so forth must be obtained. That would be addressed as a condition of approval, and that is something that happens subsequent to planning commission approval, so after it's circulated throughout, the city eventually goes over to the city's building and other inspectors who address those items. And that about concludes it. So we did recommend approval of the site plan. We have a number of conditions, I think two of them to be exact.
Andy, let's go off on recommendations for just a second here, and let's go back and use the adult use marijuana establishment special land use standards. With the change of the twenty-one foot tall structure to seven, six, seven foot, I would propose that we accept the standards of the adult use marijuana establishment special land use standards as written. Do I have a second?
I'll support it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Standards are accepted. Now your recommendations.
Okay, so we recommend approval with, as I mentioned, the twenty-two standards or the twenty-two conditions of approval. I will kind of walk through these generally so as to kind of keep this moving on here. The first three or four are standards that we put on everything, so K to P is compliant requirements from the DPW, engineer, fire department, police department, and so forth. Comply with all applicable state, federal, local permits. In addition to comply with all city ordinances, submit any missing site plan items, of which there are very few of those. Receive licensing as a micro business through the state of Michigan. Landscaping, so we talked about the six-foot twelve privacy fence on the south and west property lines. Lighting shall comply with 4.24 zoning ordinance along with nineteen point oh three C. Signs shall comply with check twenty. Submit a properly provisional license issued by the city rule. So obviously, this, this is that local approval process with the city of Lowell, so they would not be able to begin vaccinations until the city issues final operating license that's issued pursuant to that regulatory ordinance that we're talking about earlier. Eleven, ongoing maintenance of all landscaping, trees, buffers, et cetera. Twelve, be approved by and agree with any conditions from low light power. Thirteen, address anything that we have noted on their security plan. Fourteen, maintain odors so that any odor generated inside the establishment is not intended outside the building. Keep your doors closed, windows shut, et cetera. Maintain all your air scrubbing infiltration systems in working order, and use at all times. Follow manufacturer's recommendations for filters and so forth to ensure proper performance. Waste receptacles shall be secured and locked at all times. They need to show the indoor waste receptacle on the floor plan. Rooms associated with growing and processing shall be subject to inspection and approval by the city. Fuel, fertilizer, fungicide, pesticide, et cetera, shall be stored and may secure them in a locker area, also subject to inspection by the city. Do not sell alcoholic beverage or tobacco products. Comply at all times with the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. Obtain all of their permits, and if there is a conflict on the state zoning ordinance, would be preempted by the state of Michigan. So those are the list of conditions of approval. You are free, of course, to modify or add conditions as long as they are reasonably related to the proposed land use.
At this point, too, I will close the public hearing, and I will make a recommendation that with the twenty-two conditions, or twenty, yeah, twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
That the premier botanics special land use be passed. Do I have a second?
I'll support it.
And discussion? Amy, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Sheriff Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ghadula?
Yes.
Thank you. The premier botanic special land use has passed. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next public hearing is for the River City Canvas Special Land Use, 2163 West Main. It is a public hearing. Do we have a representative here? I would recommend that we table it until next week. Or next month, I'm sorry.
You want to come back next week?
We will. We'll table it. Member, bro. Andy, will you check on the applicant?
Yeah, I am surprised they're not here. I've been in contact with them pretty regularly over the last couple of weeks, so.
Did you see them out here at all?
I don't, I've never met them in person here. I've met her.
Staff report. Mike? Amy?
Andy? We will have one site planned to review next month, I don't recall it, or along with apparently the River City Canvas.
And the graphic.
And the graphic, yes.
And definitions.
Eventually, if our agenda ever ends out, I will provide you with some new shit to talk about as well.
Commissioner Mike?
I'm good. Beautiful weather.
Yes. Tom?
Well, just a comment. I mean, I sympathize a lot with the gentleman's opinion and so on, and it's like, it is kind of frustrating that when there's eight pop shops coming to town and signs going up on both sides of Main Street, that all we can do is quibble about the size of their shrub, you know, and I get that it's not our job, but when the members of the public are coming in, voicing their complaint, and then, you know, I'm sitting here, kind of like, yeah, I pretty much agree with what that guy's saying. Is there any, it's not our place to be like?
The city council would be the only?
I was thinking if you make a recommendation as a?
Yeah, it's just a recommendation.
A planning commission to put a cap on?
Here's the problem of caps, because we looked at this essentially, and this is the problem. The first time you set a cap, the problem when they created the stat, when they created the rules for the statute, this was, this was spelled up directly to the state. Come up with a plan, so if we do cap, we can have standards that are regulated by the state of Michigan that we have to follow, that we can determine to rule people out if you have a cap. So say you have, allow one of each license. So you have six, so you have six people applying. If the state would have put some standards in place to dictate how you can judge and not judge whoever's going to get selected, I would think we would very easily have a cap. The problem is, the state didn't do that. They were told, they were asked specifically, especially by some of the larger cities in the state, help us with this. They didn't want to touch it. And the issue that you run into is, when you do, when you do these caps, the first time someone doesn't get it, they're suing the city, and we have no legal basis to defend ourselves, which then means we're going to have to pay. Well, and on top of it, our insurance company's not going to cover us to pay that. So when you, when, you know, one of the things we learned through this is, when you, when you go into this, you're either all in or you're all out, and unfortunately, that's the way it is.
I remember this conversation when you're developing the ordinance as a special land use, like, you know, lottery, or is it going to be a?
We looked at that, yeah, and once they, once the state came out and said, they didn't, they didn't address it, well, it's like, there's nothing we can do, unfortunately. It's just the way it, it's just the way it is. I mean, time's going to tell whether or not all these are, I mean, right now, you're going to see a bunch of them. Time's going to tell. The free market's going to dictate who's successful and who isn't. And I know people don't like to hear that, but there's, there's an issue, but the problem is too, is how much government do you want in being involved in the free market, too? That's part of, you know, that's part of the debate. But unfortunately, the way it's, the way the rules are set up, this is the way it is. You know, I give people's frustration. I wish the state would have come up with something so we could, we could use, but since there's nothing, there's no, you can come up with any type of different, you know, challenging way to challenge it, you're going to, you're going to wind up in court, and you're going to spend a lot of money that you don't, that we really don't have.
Okay, Andy, to remember, the sites that are available are shrinking rapidly, so some of the sites that have passed, the improvement in the property itself isn't.
Yes, the shrubbery. We will see, this year, we will see significant.
I think there's significant.
You will see significant increases in taxable value of those properties.
Yeah, it's true.
It'll be going to, it'll go to the Downtown Development Authority, but you will, and where before, when we were having the debate about how much money we'd actually get from these, I was, I was real skeptical. I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten any type of analysis from the state as to how much we're getting, but I know how much our one facility is generating in sales per day, and I tend to think that, I mean, I'm starting to have, I'm already starting to take the thought that this might be a lot more, there's going to be a lot more revenue to the city than I ever anticipated, I think.
That was a question I get asked quite often, is, okay, is the city benefiting from these establishments? I don't really quite know how to answer that.
So I can kind of answer it in maybe three ways. First one is property values. You're going to see an increase in property values in the area where this is a lobby, because you're seeing sales of property sell significantly higher than what they were valued at. So that is going to cause some increase in taxable value. We yet to know what the, what the amount's going to be from the, from the, from the revenue from, from the state. I actually, the way, the way the law is structured, local governments get fifteen percent of the excise tax, and they, they give that out per hour on how many facilities you have. So the more facilities you have, in theory, the more money you get. Now, the question I have is, part of the, part of that allegation is supposed to go to the roads and schools. I'm starting to think that, I'm going to start having conversations with NML, my state rep, our state senator, about, okay, the money for roads and schools, that really, that really needs to go to the places where they opted in, not spread out statewide. It really needs to go to the places that actually opted in, from where I, from where I sit, because it's other, you know, the money's going to get spread right, right, it's set out right now, it's going throughout the entire state to a lot of places that don't, that aren't, that aren't taking this risk. And so I'm going to be having that conversation relatively, starting to have that conversation with them relatively soon. Going back, also, the other thing that you got to remember is, the city gets a significant pilot payment in lieu of taxes from low and light power, to about three hundred and seventy-five, four hundred thousand dollars a year. We're, we know that with some of these facilities, we're going to see significant increases to our pilot that we're going to get from light power because of the demands. Also, the demands from the water, from the water and sewer as well, we're going to see significant increases there. So there's, there's a, there's a lot of different areas where the city is going to be seeing a lot more than what we, what we're seeing right now, and it still remains to be seen, but I, I'm a little, from what I've seen in the first nine months since Med's Cafe is open, my, my opinions are, while I need a little bit more time for more fact, my opinions are starting to think this is going to be a lot more significant to the city than, than I ever thought before. That's why I can answer it.
Another, another question for you. Has there been any significant increase for the police?
Absolutely not. I believe we've had two calls for service, maybe three calls of service because of it, and I believe two were accidents.
Because I know when I go on, you see Lowell first, and you read her reports for one, there's just never.
No, we've had, I think we've had. Yeah, no, the three, the three complaints I believe we've had at the, we've been dispatched to the property, I believe two were just accidents that coming off M21, and then the other one was, I believe was an internal issue amongst a rogue employee, we'll just say. But other than that, we've had no issues whatsoever, so.
I know another one of them is just open, or is opening this week or something?
I believe Loom's going to be, well, they, they were going to tell me when they're open, but I believe maybe this week or next.
So can I see how it, I'm curious how it's going to shake out with having another, as these subsequent facilities come online to kind of see where that equilibrium is?
And I ask these, when they come in and send out their applications, the first question I ask them is, do you think all these facilities are going to sustain themselves? And every one of them says, yeah, they do. It's, it, I'm like, they're like, basically what they're saying is, some of the businesses might not make it, but they're going to be picked up by the businesses that are currently in place, if you, if you understand what I'm saying. That's what they're, that's what they're telling me.
Margin on the product is just so huge, it's almost.
And one of the other things, too, I don't know if you saw the Sixty Minutes thing, probably about, I'd say about two, three months ago, Sixty Minutes did a big expose in California about the recreational marijuana there, and how the people who went in on, who invested in it, how they're really not benefiting, and how the communities are not really benefiting there. Well, I ask that question, too, when I, when I, when I, when I talk to these people, because it, you know, it, you know, it kind of really raises a red flag, but from what I understand is, is the way California's lost, we're written towards recreational marijuana, it really hamstrung the investment. it really hamstrung the investor, and really, it didn't really, it really hamstrung the investors because they're, they weren't, the tax, the excise taxes were so high that they really, they were, they can't function. And there are actually, a lot of them are actually losing money. And then the other thing too out there is they haven't been able to control the black market as well. Where here, they're doing a little bit better job of it. So the way, the way it was structured here, it's been a little bit more beneficial to everyone and everyone involved. So, so yeah, there's, I mean, I, I understand people's frustration, but these are just the facts.
Marty?
I'm good.
Colin?
Yeah, I, I talked to the guy too, but our job is mainly to uphold what the standards that the city has set forth and to keep the public safe.
Right.
I mean, we spent a long time writing those ordinances.
We did.
We asked for public input. And we were very consistent about it. The city had the other side of those ordinances at the same time. People had their chance, certainly, to make any recommendations. And we set the ordinances, they weren't willing to. I mean, we put some thought into it. I don't feel bad about it at all. I, and yet I agree that having eight to ten places out there just feels out of balance, feels lackluster. On the other hand, I'm looking at it, and I'm looking at the actual building itself, the signage. Everything is looking cleaner, better looking than what was there before. And certainly, the other new ones coming in, every one of them are actually going to be better looking than what was there, and a better use of the facilities, frankly. So.
The crazy thing too is, our ordinance is now basically treated as a model ordinance as to how your community should do this. It is a model ordinance. And I can tell you Greenville's looking at our ordinance. I know Cedar Springs took a lot of what we did into their ordinance. I know, just from talking to our city attorney, who's kind of been one of the leaders in getting communities setting up their ordinances statewide, and even from, I know from the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, our ordinance is, they, they, they think our ordinance is very thorough. And, and it's, but it's, you know, it basically says, if you can meet these standards, you can operate, and.
So I think that means we did our job. Well, I don't know if your.
Cellar ordinances? What's that? Cellar ordinances?
Mike, I don't know if your speaking fees are the same as mine, but, I mean, they've been pretty substantial since, since the other places are looking for ordinance.
I wish. But I mean, I know, I talked to Greenville quite a bit about theirs, and what they're trying, you know, because they're looking at doing this as well. And I know, I mean, I know I'm talking, I mean, I talk to Jessica about this all the time. And yeah, it's, I know, I know it's a divisive issue, but, you know, it, you know, it's my job to obviously carry out what the city council said, but where I sit, I view it like alcohol. No, no, no different. We, I mean, people don't realize, you can buy alcohol from ten different places in the city limits as well, so.
Well, I believe there was four more states that legalized this marijuana in this last election. And it's now getting to the point where the federal government is going to have to take a very hard look at it.
I, I think they're going to see changes.
Yeah, we're going to keep the River City.
Yeah, keep the River City, keep Andy's comments on it, the rest and stuff, we can recycle. With that, do I have a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
And sport?
Sport.
Stand adjourned.